Roll call the City Council for the meeting of Wednesday, November 6th, 2013. Mr. Winarski, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murfsky, Mr. Witherspoon. All please rise for a moment in silent meditation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. President, I ask that we remember all of those in our community, both locally and globally, that are less fortunate than we are in any and every way. We ask that we remember those in our community that have lost loved ones since the last time we were in these chambers, and finally ask that our God and Creator give us wisdom and the proper information to make the right decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of October 16th and bills for payment for November 8th and November 15th. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murfsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. Mr. President, I believe Mr. Brennan has a presentation.
Yes, we have some special guests here today, and between Mr. Brennan and Bob Murfsky, if you would.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I want to introduce some guests there here today, and if anyone's wondering what the models are about in the hallway there, you'll soon find out, and we'll talk about that. But Dorian Petrie from Collegiate Academy is here. If you can come to the podium, maybe just give a brief introduction of what we're doing here and what we've been involved with. But Councilman Bob Murfsky and myself were involved in a team this summer. It was called the Erie Design Collaborative Summer Camp, and the details will be discussed in two seconds here. Thank you, Dorian, for being here.
Thank you, Dave, and thank you, Bob, for participating in the summer program. As Dave said, my name is Dorian Petrie. I'm a teacher at Collegiate Academy, and I had the opportunity to work with students this past summer in the Erie Design Collaborative. Today, we have with us Javish Santiago and Alejandra Ledezma from Pfeiffer Burley, who worked with Dave on the project, and from Central Tech, Christian Kreidinger, and his teachers also here, Maureen Beck. So the Erie Design Collaborative was a product of the Green Schools Academy. We participated in that in Pittsburgh throughout the school year last year. So this past summer, teams of students created models. Their task was to create a model that involved natural and sustainable design elements. They had 10 hours in one week to either design a school classroom or a school area. So as you'll see, there is a library, a school garden, a cafeteria, and other areas. And the teams consisted of an architect, an environmentalist, a teacher, and teams of 2 to 10 students. And so they had a really very involved task to create this in 10 hours. And so you'll see the result of that in those models. They also had to produce a display board that explained their project, the team members, and what their goals were. We have 13 models from 12 different schools. We have had them showcased at East High School, Erie Insurance, and this week at City Hall, and thank you for that. And then we have a program at the Jefferson Educational Society on December 9th that will be publicized very shortly, and they will also be on display for the month of March in the second floor of the Tommert Center. So thank you very much for your attention to this, and we appreciate you allowing us to display our models and educate the Erie community about sustainable design in schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Annie. Thank you very much. Any comments, Council? Thanks for coming out. Kids, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Repository sales, Mr. Clem?
Yeah, is there anyone here to speak on a repository sale?
Good morning. My name is Matthew Goode, and I'm the Director of Real Estate Development for Housing and Neighborhood Development Service, or commonly known as HANDS. We are seeking a repository sale of 336 East 14th Street, which is part of what we consider the Midtown Neighborhood and would be our fifth phase of development in that neighborhood involving three single-family homes.
Not so much a question, but if you could, you gave us a little more information in the back just about how the attention to ADA regulations and there's a certain concern and attention towards individuals with disabilities. Could you talk a little bit more about that as well?
The funding for the three homes is a combination between a commitment from the city of Erie through the Home Program, which is a HUD program that the city administers, as well as the Federal Home Loan Bank, and a new dimension to it is the Pennsylvania Council on Disabilities. We're part of a statewide effort to increase housing opportunities for persons with disabilities. And so our commitment has been to have visitable features to these homes, meaning persons with disabilities could visit, family members. This particular development will also involve a fully accessible home for persons with disabilities.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. President, if I could. Matthew, did you say there are three parcels of land here? I know you said, I think you said, three homes.
Yes, there are three homes. This would be the one we're purchasing off the repository sale, also-
Oh, just one off repository?
Correct.
Okay, because I was looking on here, three, I don't know, I can't read it, 336 East 14th?
Correct.
That's the one you're purchasing. The others you already own, HANDS already owns?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
We purchased a home at 1223 German Street, and we've held kind of land banked for a while further down on 14th Street, but it would be on 14th.
Okay, and they'll be putting three new homes in those-
Correct.
-place of those.
Correct. In addition to the homes, we purchased a small lot at the corner of Division and 13th Street. We plan a bit of a community garden or some landscaped area with a sign designating the Midtown Neighborhood, which we currently don't have. But these three homes will be, I think, the 31st, 32nd, and 33rd homes that we've built in that particular neighborhood, so.
And all three of these parcels are vacant, or just this one is vacant?
This one and the other one on 14th is vacant, and the one on German Street will be, there's a current structure there that will be demolished.
Yeah, okay, very good. Well, I appreciate your efforts in that neighborhood. You've done a beautiful job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goode. Anyone else for a repository sale? Hearing none.
Okay, citizens to be heard, Amy Comptore.
Hi, Council, my name's Amy Comptore. I'm at 913 State Street, apartment 903. I wanted to talk to you guys about buses. I apologize, does say emergency here on the air, and I was going to speak about that, but there's been some developments lately with the buses that I'd like to take to your There's been a change as well from Sixth and French Bus Stop was a longstanding one for the Route 21, and it was on, that bus shelter was on the Erie Insurance property. Erie Insurance, as wonderful as they are with the new developments and everything, has had some issues with EMTA and shelters. And I don't think that they've actually come to light. I don't think that, I think this was actually something that people thought could have been shoved under the rug again. And the way people found out about this change was that there was another big red and white sign, and it was, there was nothing in the papers, there was nothing on TV. It was kind of interesting, because the same day that that sign went up was the day right after the EMTA Board meeting. They had an opportunity to say to about 20 or 30 citizens there that were at that board meeting about this, and 10 of us went back and met with Mr. Tan privately. And yet, nobody from the Board, not even the new interim director, Mr. Tan, had mentioned to any of us about it. I was fortunate, I had put a call in, Mr. Tan, when I had encountered that. There was, it was me, two other adults, and two children found out about that just by showing up. I use that almost every day, that particular stop. My recovery's been doing well, but I still have my share of problems, just like everybody else, with my rheumatoid arthritis in my hip and everything. Going that extra block from French to Holland where the stop was, having the bus actually pass us, because there was a huge fence, and God forbid if you actually had a wheelchair or walker, I was fortunate, I was, I didn't take my walker that day, because I'm trying to actually get up and use my hip more and not be as reliant on it. But for the people who are disabled, that entire walkway of sidewalk had fence, wire fence, all around it, still does. And those kind of people need that sidewalk to be safe. And it doesn't make much sense unless you wanted to make a statement about the property and, so to speak, dividing off the bus stop. Understand what I'm saying? Common sense could just, you could stop at the sidewalk, at the beginning of the sidewalk, and still make your fence properly and not have to go on to places where people utilize or force them to go into the middle of the street, make that a public safety issue that we usually have just in winter, which shouldn't be a safety issue at all. So I'm just, I'm curious where the communication is here. I put a call in to Mr. Tan that day about that, and a bus that doesn't normally serve on the 15th of the hour, usually at 5:45 and 6:45 for those two times, and then it goes back to its usual schedule. Fortunately, we got a, we had a bus out there, but Council, if it hadn't been me, I don't think that it would, that anybody would have gotten that bus at that particular time, you know? And all of our citizens deserve the same amount of attention, not just one or two or a few. So if you can increase the amount of communication, I mean, perhaps maybe a week worth of notice, whether it be in the paper, whether it be on TV, something, you know? I mean, the cute part was is that they had a EMTA thing that night. They were groundbreaking, the groundbreaking ceremony was that morning. It would have been a nice follow-up. So I just leave you with the tone of communication and a bit of frustration here on behalf of a lot of people, because I believe this is only going to get worse. We've let out a door, so to speak, and we've let them have an inch, and now we're going into having them take a mile if we don't allow something to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Good morning.
I ride downtown a lot, back and forth with my power-
Excuse me, sir, if you'd please state your name and address.
Uh, my name is Paul Mucy. I ride up and down State Street with my power chair for something to do and that, and I noticed they took out some of them red bricks, and they put regular concrete in, and I mentioned it to the guy, I says, well, they have such thing as colored cement, well, why don't, they should have put red cement in. And some of them had to be replaced, some of them are over where the ground caved in a little bit, some are upward, and some of them are down in, into the dirt. Even over by the Plymouth Tavern over there, I noticed that some of them are where it swells up, the bricks, brings the bricks up, and some of them are way down into the dirt. I don't know if it's because people are driving on them. Incidentally, I don't know. And another thing I wanted to mention, that if I'm not mistaken, did Obama gave funds to Pendo and that for the, replace bridges in Pennsylvania or fix them? And I think they should replace the bridge on Liberty Street from 12th to 14th, where the semis get, always hits them all the time. Either re, probably have to redo the whole bridge, get CSX and Norfolk and Southern involved in it, because it's part of their bridge too, and they haven't put all new walls in. And I think it should be 15-foot high from the bottom of the bridge, where the ceiling part of the bridge is, to the road should be at least 15 feet, so that way the trucks can fit under there instead of hitting it all the time. And your car carriers that go down to Weaver Buick, they could fit under there too, if they redo the bridge, because I thought they had funds to do the bridges in Pennsylvania, and that bridge should be one of them, from 12th to 14th on Liberty Street there. That's what I'm talking about there. And another thing, I heard from a guy where I live, he said they're going to start charging the people that ride the trolleys 25 cents. He said that's what the bus, one of the bus drivers said. And then when I got on the trolley on State Street, to come up from the dock, I asked him about it, he said it could be possible they might do that, do that. So I just wanted to mention to you about that, that it starts out where you'll charge them 25 cents, and then maybe a year or two, then you'll go up another quarter or something. All right, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you for your times.
Good morning.
It's good to still be alive.
Mr. McDonald, if you would, state your name.
My name is McDonald. That would be a name you want to forget.
I know that.
You want to forget it.
Thank you.
I want to talk about me this morning. I want to tell you about something happened to me. Back, I don't know, a couple of years ago, some women came to me and was telling me the cops was calling them bitches and whores, the black women. They were being called bitches and whores by the police. Now, I'm gonna tell you-
Just watch the-
They talked that to them women, I'm going to tell you what they told me, and then I'm going to tell you what happened to me. I know you don't want to hear it, but you're going to hear it this morning.
No swearing, no, just no swearing.
Well, hey, tell them, wait a minute now, you, just wait a minute. Tell them that don't be talking to them women's like that. Now, you tell them, I'm just telling you what they told me. They scared of y'all, I'm not. I'm not. I know they got a box waiting for me later on down the road. I know I'm going to die. Y'all think you're going to live forever, but it'll never happen. And what you're letting go on is bad. Now, I want you to bear with me, and I want a little extra time, because you want to hear what I got to say. Now, if you don't want to hear it, tell me to sit down now, because you need to hear this.
No problem hearing what you got to say, just don't swear, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Somebody broke in my house, they've been breaking in, and I've been telling the police about it. They know what's going on. Well, make a long story short, on the 22nd, I, I'm coming down Reed Street, I had some tires stacked up there, and I had a barrel there with some stuff in it, then I had a garbage can by the fence down there. I come by there, somebody done knocked the tires over, knocked the garbage, knocked that barrel over, and knocked the garbage can over. And I know that come from across the street, because that's the mentality that kid got over there. He ain't no kid, he's a grown-up. So I, it kind of shook me up at first. I, so I said, I'm going to check. I looked over there, they had broke my window in going in the basement. My window was broken, you know? I put this two-by-four there, I see that two-by-four is gone. So that night, I come up there, sitting to see if somebody was in there. I'm sitting there, about probably 15 minutes, a half an hour, the police came by, went up, turned around and came back, suckling there where Austin is, he got behind me, I know he run my plate. He got out and came up there. It was raining like, I don't know, it was raining. He knocked on the window, I rolled the window down a little bit. He said, roll the window on down. I said, it's raining out there, I don't want it to rain in here. Roll the window down, I'm gonna knock it out. Now, that's a nice way for Erie's finest to be talking to. I'm 80 years old. I done lived my life, I'm going to die anytime now. I had shingles, I'm a diabetic. So he said, get out. I'm trying to get out, he snatched the door open and snatched me out. threw me down on the ground, got about eight, I don't know how many of them little suburbans came up. They, they got on me. I don't know if I was in a hurry to get out of the subway or to jump out. They jumped out, they jumped on me. There's a, there's a stream of water there. They pushed me down in this water, pushing my head out. I thought my jaw was broken. I was all scarred up. I'm soaking wet, they pushing me down in the water. They're tasing my back.
Mr. McDonald.
I don't want you to see, I don't want you to tell anything that I'm lying.
Mr. McDonald.
I want you to see them. They tased my back. I'm mad now about that. I'm mad about it.
Mr. McDonald, we-
I know, and I know you don't want to see it, but I'm going to show you to hear this. That was wrong.
Your time is up, sir.
No, wait a minute, now say that.
I'm sorry.
You don't want to hear what I got to say?
Your time is up, thank you.
Okay.
The buzzer ring.
I didn't think you want to hear what I had to say, but that's okay. You will wish you had not listened to me.
Be more happy-
I'm not joking. I'm not joking. Somebody has asked before what happened to you. You are all responsible, because you hired those policemen.
Any other citizens be, thank you.
I asked you before, I said-
Thank you.
How do you teach your policemen?
Your time is up, sir.
They should be respected instead of the taxpayer.
Your time is up, sir.
My time is up.
Come in here in dark zones.
Any other citizens to be heard this morning?
You're not doing enough, David, you run for office again. I don't understand. I'm going to be honest.
Any other citizens to be heard this morning?
Mr. President, as the next citizen's coming, I think there is absolutely a process for complaint besides talking to us, so if that is really, I think there's a way to do that beyond what you did today.
This is the best way I can do it, because y'all know this is the law, I can do it.
But this doesn't count in the sense that it doesn't, it doesn't show up on any record. And again, I don't know the scenario, I don't know what happened, but I think it's our responsibility to tell you that there are, if there's a complaint, there's a legitimate and official, proper way to make it. And this is not that venue, although we're not saying don't come down and talk to us, I'm saying that if you want it to be on record appropriately, then there's a way to do that. Again, I don't know the situation, I don't know what happened, I don't have a comment about it, except if you were violated and you feel you were violated, there's a proper course of action to deal with that beyond just talking to us.
You ought to die. You ought to die. Please, I don't want to die, Mr. McDonald.
Morning, Mr. McAdory.
They were laughing all the time that they were doing that. They were laughing.
Enough. Mr. McDonald, thank you. That'll be enough. Mr. McAdory, good morning.
Good morning, Council. My name's Willie McAdory. I stay at 448 East 15th Street. What he said happened to him is not uncommon where we live. It happens all the time, all the time. And the names that, oh yeah, they do that. They walk up on the corner, in their car, brother standing on the corner, call them a few of them old nasty names, but get off the corner. I mean, that's no way, really, to treat citizens. You know, and they even got, some people's even telling us now, well, y'all are not even citizens, we do what we want to. And the reason why I know that, young man told me that. And I looked at him and laughed. I was in this community when it wasn't six of y'all in the whole area, so what are you saying? So, you know, here to there and to this. But I can sympathize with what Mr. Mc is saying. And then, you know, like for them young officers to treat old men the way he said he was treated, that's not right. That's not right. You don't do older white gentlemen like that when they approach them, they give them all the courtesy in the world. You know that throwing down in the water? That's not right. That's an insult, really. Because what do it accomplish? You put the handcuffs on the individual, up, standing up by the car as well as you can, him laying on the ground, with his knee, with his knee in his back or his knee on his neck. All that ain't necessary to arrest nobody. Now, if this individual is fighting and carrying on, I can understand them doing what they got to do to seduce any individual. You know, with that said, now what I really want to comment is, Mr. Shad Conley, he did the right thing last week. He had get his young 15-year-old boy those charges for that robbery with the gun and so forth and all. He had given them charges as the charges 15-year-old as an adult. Then, just last week, he went back and rescinded that, and gave him juvenile with the stipulation he come back, he gonna get that 10 to 20. Now, those are the things that young black men is threatening with, those are the things that happen to young black males. But my understanding is, just here, I don't understand it, for real. An adolescents, children, 14 and 15-years-old, they don't know the consequences of what, of their actions all the time, of what they're doing. They don't know. They don't know, and they go out and they make these stupid mistakes, and when the police get a hold to them and get over there, they automatically decriminalize these children with felonies. You and I both know, if a child is decriminalized at 15-years-old with a felony on his record, he's done in this society forever. What is he going to do the rest of his life but commit crimes? Okay? And it's nothing, it's nothing that's guaranteed, this is something that's pre-planned already. And you don't do this here to white kids. I've asked them if they think that, you know, that I'm lying, AbraXis is closed now, I understand, but Gannondale is still there. Go out to Gannondale and do an intensive study on some of the charges that those young ladies come up here with, that judges send them up here from other counties with some of these charges. Them charges would blow your mind, and they are still in the juvenile system compared to what they do in Erie County. You're destroying our youth. If a child 15-years-old is declared- If a child fifteen years old is declared with a felony on his record, there's nothing else he can do in America. Every time he get ready to pull out for a job, you got a felony. So, what is he supposed to do? Say if he, say if the kid live to get seventy. What about the fifteen years? What about those fifteen years that, that he's fifteen now? But what about the fifty-five years? He ain't gonna be able to do nothing in, in this coun, in, you know, with his life. And if he do have a chance to do something with his life, it's just about too late in the game. But then who's say that, that this gonna happen? I understand my time is up. I'm about through. But these are some of the things that we need to consider, that what's going on. Then our children is dying like flies. You know, we just had two homicides within the last two or three weeks. And then you tell us, you know, that, uh-
Thank you, Mr. McAdory.
Very much. Okay, thank you. But, uh-
Very good points. Thank you.
But I need to say this here for our lead. When our children is dying, we, we have a right to know who killing them. Okay? Thank you.
Any other citizens this morning to be heard? Morning.
Good morning. My name is Jan Pat Peraki. I reside at 523 East 37th Street. I have had the pleasure of knowing probably five of the current board members here, council members. Ms. Heran, I taught at Mercer's Prep. Mr. Jones was also one of my students. Mr. Winarsky, I've known you since you were fifteen. You probably don't remember me, but I know your-
Oh, I remember.
Dale and Cheryl. Mr. Mersky was the black sheep of his family. All of his brothers and sisters went to Mercer's, but he went to Cathedral Prep. But, uh-
Get in, JP.
He is still my neighbor, so we'll let that one slide. Mr. Witherspoon, it's been ages, but you used to change your clothes when you were officiating at basketball in my office. Many a times, I walked in on a lot of you guys in states of undress.
Let them know you was there, though.
I am here representing the homeowners of the 500 block of, 500 and 600 block of East 37th Street. We have what we call like a nuisance problem where we feel that we are being discriminated against and we would like to bring it to the councilman's attention so that we could hopefully get a fast and speedy resolution to the problem. I have collected here twenty-one signatures from property owners in the 500 block and some of the 600 block on East 37th Street. The situation is this, there were signs that appeared, posted, some on metal stakes in the ground, some on signs on the telephone poles. We as homeowners were not, we had not gotten any kind of warning regarding these signs being posted. We did not receive a letter. We didn't receive any memo. We didn't receive a phone call. It wasn't on the news or anything like that. And they were for odd and even parking days. My next-door neighbor, Joyce Nelson, called down to City Hall, connected to, this was Mayor Philippi's spokesperson at the time, and was told that these signs were going to be posted from French Street all the way over to Pine Avenue. So, that include then the east of, going east from French Street toward Pine Avenue. She also didn't know at the time how far down from 37th Street it was gonna go, below 36th, 35th, 34th. She didn't know. Well, these signs were, you know, installed. And the thing is, they have not been installed as we were told on any of the other streets. And that has been that way now for several years. And basically, we have just, you know, felt that we have been singled out. We don't really know why. At one time, there was parking on both sides of Ash Street between 37th Street there and 8th, 38th Street for Mercer's College students. It was a very, you know, much of a problem when you were on 38th Street to make a turn onto Ash because traffic was parked on both sides. And if oncoming vehicles were coming, there was, you know, a problem there. Eventually, those signs were taken down and now there's no parking on either side there. Sometime after that, those signs then appeared in the 500 and 600 block on East 37th Street. And, you know, since they were supposed to have been installed, as we were told from the mayor's office at the time, throughout the entire neighborhood, we didn't do anything at that time. But since then, we have gone already through, you know, a different mayor and the status is the same. And any time that people have come to visit the homeowners, a lot of them are getting tickets, family members, relatives, friends, because they'll stop, drop off some prescription or just to say a quick hello. Don't even know the signs are there. We have some people that work different shifts. They have to park their, you know, car on one side, end up having to moving it, you know, before they go to bed when, when they get home because then they'll be on the wrong side by the time they wake up. It's also a problem, especially in the winter, because most of the people have a garage and driveways and so their vehicles are usually parked in there. But if they're being parked in the street then and plows are coming through, there are a lot of elderly people in the area and so they have their driveways plowed. And when city plows come through, they have to go around and dodge these parked cars. And you know what, you know, that amounts to with all these mounds of snow, as well as private contractors having to find place to put the snow. And it just, you know, it turns into a mess trying to navigate down the street.
Ms. Peraki, your time has expired. If you would, we can make copies of the signatures you have and we'll definitely check into it for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Who do I give these signatures to? Thank you for hearing me.
Thanks for coming out today. Any other citizens be heard this morning? I'll tell Cheryl you said hi. She's in town. Yeah.
Good morning. My name is Vicki Taylor and I live at 337 Short Street. And I am concerned about the abuse going on in the department here. And I wanna know what the proper protocol would be for people to be protected and for our streets to be safe. So, I'm here, this is my first time coming down here to one of your meetings. And I would really like some information. If you could give it to me, what's the proper protocol so we can go about investigating this so we make sure that everybody's happy? That's all I have to say.
Thank you. And thank you for coming down tonight and we'll- Any other citizens this morning?
Mr. President, while Mr. Koppelman gets to the mic, it appears as if we need the citizen complaint procedure to be kind of spelled out for our citizens here for the police. I know we had the chief in, for our meeting, but perhaps the next meeting, we could bring the form and explain to people what the process is for the police complaint, 'cause they're, 'cause we, we can't investigate anything that Mr. McDonald or anyone else alleges. The police has a process for investigating police campaigns, complaints. We're not that process and we need to make sure they have the proper mechanism. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I look, I'd like to first of all congratulate you for all being here today. Some of you probably out celebrating last night. And, but here you are, so congratulations and, and-
Mr. Koppelman, if you would, please state your name.
Congratulations to all the endorsed candidates and all the ones that weren't endorsed by the Erie Time News. In fact, John over there, he, he run terrific. He ran against a three to one registration against them. He had a fellow councilman backing him. He was endorsed and that was his mistake. He should have told the Erie Time News not to endorse him. Anyway, I would like to, I'd like to comment on proposed ordinance 27, 2013, sale of property along the Bayfront Port Access Road from the Port Authority to the, to the, to the Economic Development Corporation. Here this little peninsula here, the lake, canal, channel, the bay. And along on this, let's take a look at this. Here you got the marina, you got campgrounds, you got the South Pier, you got the parking developed in phase one, two, and three by the Port Authority years ago. Here's the Frescaile cargo ship here, built here in Erie in the 1970s, second thousand-foot ship on the Great Lakes. And it should come around. Here's this road here, which is described as the smoothest road in Erie County by one of the members of the planning commission. He said, "That's a smoothest road and now you're gonna take, shut it off or detour it over to the Port Access Road." And then the thing is that now in this blighted aid, so-called blighted area, apparently you're gonna put a warehouse so that it can make few wood chips up at Hammer Mill property, truck it down to this warehouse down here. And then when the ship comes in, truck it over to the ship, send it to Europe. And since the St. Lawrence Seaway closes for two, three months a year, that, that's gonna be a limited operation. But anyway, they, so it doesn't sound too bad. You make it up here at Hammer Mill, you bring it down here, put it in the warehouse, ship comes in, you put it on the ship. But wait, why would you do that? Hammer Mill's right up here. Anybody, this logical, would just take that stuff from Hammer Mill and put it right down there on the ship. So, that leaves a warehouse here that, what for? Why are they actually building a warehouse down here? They're not gonna use it. They'll take the stuff right to the ship. But where can we get answers? I don't know. You got, you got these authorities and you got this Economic Development Corporation and their heads act like kings. I mean, and that's good. I mean, they, they're in charge. They wanna do a good job. Let them be a king. But city council holds the aces. And you should be able to get answers from them by just requesting. They should lean over backwards to get your information, which you can then feed to the public. But it's all missing. So, my suggestion is that we table this proposed ordinance 27, 2013 for a couple of meetings so we can get some answers on this. And look at the idea of here on the east side. Hey, here. Wait a minute. Here's Bayfront Project Works. Couple, this is on June 3rd, Monday, June 3rd, 2013. Some pathways down to the Liberty Amphitheater. Where is it? It's on the west side, naturally. What's on the east side? Over here. This is on the east side. At last, there's a chance to do something for the east side. Develop this over here on the east side for everybody. But at least you're doing something for the east side. So, I don't know. I, I hope it makes you feel proud that, that you represent a blighted city. They have a term that's assigned just by our own people. And look at the port, or look at the Bayfront Convention Center. This is a problem they're gonna have. When the word gets out to these other competing convention centers that, that they're located in a blighted area, who's gonna wanna come to a convention center that's in a blighted area? Yeah, it's just a relative term, but you try to tell that to somebody that it's not from here. So, anyway, I appreciate all your effort. I think this thing needs to be looked into. Here's a pos, a chance of overrestarted marina, campgrounds, road, all this. They, so here's our chance to really do something for the, for the people. That sounds like five minutes. All right, well, I'd like to congratulate the candidates again where they were endorsed or weren't endorsed. And I'd like to see them take some action against these kings of these authorities so that they answer to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Koppelman. Any other citizens this morning? Any other citizens? Hearing none, Mr. Clem.
Okay. Mr. Evans had to leave the meeting.
What do we need, Mr. Clem?
Pardon?
Sorry, never mind. Never mind.
Okay. Ordinance is for final passes, council file ordinance 15,00848, and ordinance to approve the sale of property located on Port Access Road and repealing all prior ordinances or any part thereof which conflicts with the provisions of this ordinance. Motion of Mr. Evans, seconded by Mr. Jones. Council file ordinance, bill number 15,00848, now known as official file ordinance 27, 2013, be finally passed by city council. Mr. Evans has left. Is there another sponsor of this ordinance?
I'll do it, Mr. Mersky will.
Voting on the ordinance is red. Mr. Brennan?
I'll abstain, since the GADC is a affiliate agency of EDC and I'm an employee of EDC. I'll abstain from voting to appear, any appearance of conflict of interest.
Okay, Mr. Brennan abstains. Mr. Evans is absent. Ms. Ran Cunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. Ordinance is adopted, A's five, one abstention, and one absence. Okay, next we have-
Mr. President.
By Mr. Winarsky, second by Mr. Witherspoon, council file order-
Mr. Clem.
Yes?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to move the balance of the agenda.
Second motion. Any separations?
Mr. President, could you separate number one under new business, please?
Hearing none.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if this is the right. I probably should have asked this question earlier. With item six, resolution in relation to the developmental, developmentally disabled Inc. Mecca and their efforts, should we, can we give them public moment to, to talk about that a little bit? Is this a bad, is this out of order or?
Mr. Clem, we should be able to do that, right?
Uh, there's, well, there's a motion to accept the rest of the-
Right.
Resolute, we could separate that one.
I'd like to separate number six and-
And then have them come up and give us a little explanation of what they're going to do there.
Thank you, Mr. Clem. Sounds good. President, thank you.
One second there. Okay.
I'm good for one.
Next. We are going to vote on the balance of the agenda. Mr. Brennan. Ms. Ran Cunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. Okay. Let us take this resolution by Mr. Mersky then, seconded by Mr. Brennan. Resolve that the proper city officials are hereby authorized and directed to enter into a use agreement with Melkrick and Erie County Advocates for the Developmentally Disabled Mecca, a Pennsylvania nonprofit corporation for the use of Sea Francis Hagerty Park. Use agreement is attached here, too, and is listed as Exhibit A.
Yeah, Mr. President. Yeah, I would just, yeah, I just wanted to separate this and have a little, an opport- Yeah, I just wanted to separate this and have a little, an opportunity for a little more public information to be shared through the form of this meeting by representatives of Mecca. I mean, I think it's a great concept, a great idea, and we might as well, again, use this vehicle to get the message out about this great project. So, I don't know who the spokesperson will be, but you can, just again, for the record, share your name and some information, just a few moments about the project.
Thank you for having us.
Good morning.
Lori Eaton from Mecca. I'm the executive director for Mecca. Mecca's been around for many years, and we help anyone with any disability birth through life. And this project is very dear to us because we have an adaptive baseball program that we started over 21 years ago, that anybody with any disability can play baseball, in a wheelchair, with a walker, or a child that has attention deficit disorder, we have autism, we have any disability that there is. We have adults and children. We've played on several different locations for over the 21 years, and Hagerty Park is very dear to us because the city's been very good to us to allow us every Saturday mornings to go there and practice and play our games. But there is some real need at that park for people in wheelchairs, because if it rains three days before our game, the people, the condition of the field is, needs some repairs, and they can't play because their wheelchair's sinking in the mud. So what we'd like to do is, we'd like to take this field and upgrade it, and we'd also like to take the whole park and upgrade it. We're looking, there's a site plan that you have. We're looking to add parking spaces. We're looking to add a cul-de-sac in the back where the old Auburn florist was back there, the greenhouses. We want to put an adaptive baseball field back there that has a special surface on it so that when it rains, or when it doesn't rain, or whatever, people in wheelchairs and with special needs can play. And it's going to be a fabulous, fabulous park when we're done with it. We're looking to add 80 parking places for the people. This is not just for Mecca's clientele, it's for the whole community, who will really like what they see what we're doing to this park. We'll have an adaptive playground there. We're going to upgrade the existing field so that, you know, when they have softball or baseball there, it'll suit everybody's needs. It's just, this is a win-win for everybody, the citizens of Erie and the county, who, you know, because our kids come from all over the place to play. But we would, again, use that field not only just for us, but for the citizens who, right now, are in the city rec programs and everything. And they'll actually have dugouts for themselves. You know, we're hoping someday to put lights in there so that if they want to have, you know, like a tournament or something, you know, it's just, concession stand, actual restrooms up there. You know, right now, we have porta potties, and if you're someone, an adult in a wheelchair, it's very difficult to be able to use that, you know, a porta potty. So it's just, it's a fabulous thing. And for 21 years, we've dreamed about this project, and now we're wanting to push this forward, and with the help of you guys passing this today, you know, it's going to move this project forward one more time. And we have Carl Anderson, our board president, here.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you today, and as Lori said, we're really excited to be teaming up with the city of Erie, who has been a partner with us for 21 years since we began the Adaptive Baseball League. And we also have another great partner with us, and that's the Erie Sea Wolves, who, really behind their leadership, we've been able to propel this project forward because their understanding of the needs and the desires of people to have the opportunities to play baseball from childhood to adulthood has really begun us the impetus to move this project forward. And working with Doug Mitchell and our architect, Gary Matzak, who have worked tirelessly together to come up with a plan that works for everybody. And it's really a fantastic plan, as you guys have in front of you, not only conserving many of the natural beauties that exist at the park by saving the tree lines that are there, but also using unutilized space there, particularly in the area of adding a handicap parking space and accessibility to the field, and then using the underutilized area in the back of the field while not disturbing any of the homes in the neighborhood because of the way the field is configured, moving from southwest to northeast, rather than trying to come in from 29th Street and using the field from northeast to southwest. And this really still continues to give the neighborhood their opportunity to not be disturbed while being able to utilize that property that has really been underutilized for several years for the city. So we really feel that the plan that's been put together and worked on for such a long time has really come down to a point where everybody has been in agreement with how things are to work, and it's really exciting for the whole community. So we appreciate the opportunity to speak about this today and appreciate all of your support.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Voting on the resolution? Mr. Brennan, Mr. Rand Kuntso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. Next, we have a resolution by Mr. Winarski, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, confirming the recommendation of Mayor Joseph E. Senate appointing Fred Rush to the Erie Metropolitan Transit Authority Board to replace Anthony Perillo. Mr. Rush's term will expire on December 31, 2017. Discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes?
Thank you. I separated this item because I have some concern about appointing city employees to autonomous boards and authorities, and although there's no specific law prohibiting the mayor from making such an appointment, in 1987, city council did find it necessary to place an ordinance, pass an ordinance to prohibit itself from appointing city of Erie employees to boards and authorities. We know that we have many city authorities, and those are intended to be independent so that no one person is really running every aspect of our city. And the mayor's appointments also, although they are not dealt with in the letter of this law, I think the intent of the law was to ensure that autonomy of our boards and authorities. So, you know, putting a city employee on in such a leadership role as a board member of a five-member board of an authority, I think is not really in the best interest of our citizens, and we want to make sure we have some checks and balances and some independence amongst our board appointees. So I just want to draw that to our attention, and because of that issue, I cannot support this appointment. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Clem?
Roll call. Mr. Brennan? Mr. Rand Kuntso?
No.
Mr. Jones? Mr. Mersky? Mr. Witherspoon? Mr. Winarski? Okay. That is adopted, A's five, Nays one. Okay. It takes us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Kuntso.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just some follow-up to the citizens that have been talking to us a lot about police issues. We seem to have a lot of folks that come here to air their grievances about police actions. And two things. One, there is a citizen complaint procedure that the police department has an investigative process to look into those complaints, so we need to get that, we need to be using the formal process so that your issues can be addressed. And two, the issue of us doing hiring. Police hiring and fire hiring are civil service. The folks take a test, they are ranked on that test, and their selection for hiring is based on the results and the civil service board's process that is by law. So we're not selecting people for placement onto the police department off our friends' list. They take the test, and they're ranked in the order in which they are qualified for those positions. So we can't even affect the complaint in terms of hiring a different police officer. We can't do that. We can't infiltrate the civil service process. It is by law, and we follow that process for hiring. So we've got to get a better handle on those issues, and having those issues, if those complaints for the record will begin the process and the ball rolling so that it's not just hearsay or whatever. We can't, we can't do it that way. So we need to get that going forward for the future. We also had a couple of issues raised recently regarding the traffic engineers and whatnot. We've had a couple of issues of stop signs. I've had some things raised to me about yield signs around the Mercyhurst area of Briggs and Magnolia, and also today, some discussion of the parking rules on East 37th Street. So I think those are issues we may need to, you know, have a little discussion with our traffic engineer about these issues that keep coming up, and hopefully we'll have a report then for the citizens after we speak with her. That's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mersky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things, just to remind the citizens that even odd parking started November 1st, so please be aware of the signs out there and park accordingly. Leaf collection continues from our refuse department. And just to note, you know, we've been studying what other municipalities have been doing, and it's really a credit to the city of Erie. Other municipalities charge extra for leaf collection, and the city of Erie is able to provide that service to you included in your garbage payment and not as an additional charge. So take advantage of that with either the hard containers or the green recyclable bags. Erie Insurance Arena continues to be a success with the renovations. We have several big concerts coming up, including the Zac Brown Band and Elton John. So, and also, we always have our local Erie Otters, so take advantage of that. And finally, just to reiterate what Dorian Petrie said from Collegiate Academy and the Erie Design Collaborative, you know, a lot of times we hear about the bad things that our kids do in the city of Erie, and it's nice to celebrate the success of something good going on in the city. As a teacher in the Erie School District, I had the opportunity to work with the students from East High School. They volunteered their time, they didn't get paid or anything. They came in over the summer on their own accord, they didn't get any credit, they just wanted to come in, and it was an intensive 10-hour process of designing with an architect and a teacher, a green classroom or a sustainable classroom or a sustainable school setting. And I'm just really proud of the work that the kids did. And we do have some great students in the city of Erie, and we have a strong education system. I think one of the biggest misconceptions about living in the city is you can't send your kid to Erie Public Schools and that's, and have them be successful. And I know a lot of people leave the city for that reason, and that's just not true. It's a fallacy. We do have good schools, and we do have good students. And so if you have an opportunity, stop down to City Hall in the foyer and see the good work that our young people are doing. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Quickly, just to kind of continue to underscore the concern in relation to police and citizen interaction, I think if someone has a complaint that is a legitimate complaint, I think we have to recognize that. And I think the other side to that is that the citizen has to know how to articulate that in the right venue to do it. Here is an opportunity for people to verbalize things, but this doesn't get on the official record. It was a couple, a couple of years ago, there was some discussion on, you know, these types of issues, and I personally have been spoken to by several people who had, you know, verbalized complaints for different reasons and varying arrays of complaints. I went to the chief in the meeting, actually asked the chief, "Okay, chief, how many complaints are we having?" And he said, "I literally have four in this time period." Literally four, and none of them were any of the 10 or 12 that I had verbalized to me. So again, this is not in any way an indictment on all of our police department. I think every system has people in it, so sometimes things happen that get out of control on either and/or both sides of the discussion or the situation. And so, but the important thing is, is to have a system for people to articulate it where it's on record and it can be dealt with appropriately, because of what I've found often, there is either miscommunication or misunderstanding or frustration, and, but this system can get it kind of worked out and figured out a little bit better. And so we'll have some information, I'm sure, not putting words in Mr. Witherspoon's mouth in any way, but I know he's very active with that liaison position, and so I'm sure we'll hear from that. In relation to the EMTA, a citizen mentioned a concern about a potential charge for the trolley ride, and so I will definitely check into that and find out how legitimate of a concern that is and where it should be, and I'll be able to bring some information back concerning that particular issue, you know, as far as tightening up an official schedule for the trolleys, if that's going to actually happen and when, as well as a charge for that service that's been free up until now. So again, I'll check into that. Also, would like to take a moment to congratulate the Water Authority, Paul Voitek, and the board and the staff there for the official grand opening, I guess, of the upgraded water treatment facility. It's a great combination of old-school, beautiful, historic building with up-to-date, modern, and even futuristic technology operating out of it. And so we'll have, once this process is, you know, continued to flow and, flow, no pun intended, but continues to move forward, we will have some of the highest-quality water in the country, quite literally. And so, you know, congratulations to them. Had an opportunity to be at the grand opening with Mr. Winarski, a few other folks, the mayor was there, and just to be able to see how, you know, we talk about our water being our greatest, one of our greatest assets, but clean water is even better asset. And so they're doing that, and they're doing that well. And so we want to just give a shout-out to them and celebration to them for that work and for all that they continue to do, so that we can have one of our greatest resources be as high quality, as high quality as possible. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Mr. President. To add on to what Bob said about, Councilman Mersky said about the Erie Design Collaborative, again, I was very proud to take part of that, that effort. And what I think is exciting about the opportunity is maybe we'll have a future environmentalist or a teacher or an architect involved in that group, and I think it gives them something to kind of look forward to and, you know, hopefully continue that effort. Also, I attended a couple of meetings. Glenwood Heights Neighborhood Watch had a meeting, and several issues were discussed, several neighborhood issues, and hopefully we're going to take care of some of those. The bridge, their bridge reopened just last week, so I know they're pleased about that. I attended a tour of the Center City Arts, and I don't know if anyone has ever been there, but they have, I was given a tour by the director, Lee Stedman, and they reviewed their master plan for their campus there. And really, I think it's going to be a great effort for that neighborhood along 26th Street and near, in between Holland there, and I think it's great, great for the city to, if they can go forward and get some of those things going for their master plan, because it really could help out the neighborhood and, you know, kind of spread out and make the neighborhood much better. And also, I attended a meeting of McLone Park, and we talked about with the Burton Deal Neighborhood Watch, again, continued discussions on development of the park and continuing to partner with the city of Erie to make things happen out there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dave. Mr. Witherspoon?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to thank Councilwoman Kuntso and Councilman Jones for the assignment that they have given me. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Sure you'll do well. No major comments. Just a reminder, our next council meeting on November 20th will be an evening meeting. Normally, in November, December, they're all morning meetings, but due to schedule conflicts, this November 20th will be a evening meeting, 7:30. Other than that, Mr. Kwiatkowski?
Excuse me, just a quick report. We attended the O&amp;E pension meeting last week, and yesterday, we attended the Fire Department meeting for the pension plan. Both are proceeding good, and I have great news that the pension plan has now reached its high mark of 218 million. You should be very proud of that and the board members who serve on those boards. And the water reserve, although I didn't get a final figure, you might have it, Jessica, it was like nine, 9.5 or something. So it's been progressing upwards, too. That's good news for, I know Paul will be happy, but I just wanted to assure the public that, you know, the funds are in very good shape and progressing properly. and progressing properly.
Thank you. Ms. Beck?
Just want to remind everyone that Veterans Weekend is this weekend, so thank you for all of the veterans for their hard work and dedication to our country.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I, I apologize. I didn't want to say one more thing, and you sparked my mind, you looked at me and laughed. November is Epilepsy Awareness Month, and the color associated with that is purple, although I'd like to think I look dapper in purple. I'm wearing it not for that reason, but to represent that in all the young people, and in all individuals that are experiencing the issues of epilepsy. Let us keep them in our prayers and thoughts, and find ways to support efforts for, for wholeness for them, and for whatever accommodations need to be made for their quality of life to be high. Thank you for that additional time.
Mr. Clem?
City Council now adjourned at 10:10 a.m. Mr. Winarski, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Ran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Witherspoon.